I'd like to call the Lancaster City Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, August 17th to order. Time is currently 6:01 PM. Moving on, our first item up on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes of July 20th, Is there any discussion?
Yes, motion, second, and then discussion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting of July 20th, 2022.
And I second that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up for, uh, let me call that, actually, we'll go through and vote on those meetings, meeting minutes. But before I do that, I wanna just make a motion, or just make a note that Mr. Bohm is an alternate member that's serving as a voting member this evening, as well as Mr. Dastra, both of which are alternate members that will be voting tonight.
And Madam Chair, thank you for that note, and if you don't mind, can we also just appoint temporarily for this meeting a formal chair in the absence of the chair and vice chair? I think the commission is interested in having you serve.
I move in, uh, so that Nicole Schiffer be the chair for this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You guys are in for a ride tonight. All right, so we have the meeting minutes approved, I'm sorry, all in favor of the most, of the approval of the meeting minutes for July 20th, 2022. Let's just start this over, please. Can I please have a motion?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of July 20th, 2022.
How about a second?
And I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, we'll go into our agenda item number three, the subdivision and land development. We have a planning commission waiver of preliminary plan application for Pennsylvania College of Art and Design student housing project at 223 North Water Street.
So Madam Chair, this is a project that we're currently reviewing for land development, and many of the final land development plans that come before the commission have gone through a sketch plan process, and that is typically what allows them to proceed directly to final plan without preliminary plan. In this case, we did not go through a full sketch plan process with this applicant. The land development plan, as you might hear a little bit more about, is fairly straightforward in this case, and city staff believes that it's not, does not warrant a preliminary plan. However, it does exceed one of the thresholds for preliminary plan, and that's, one of those requirements is a sewer module be processed for the project, which has been done because of the increase in sewer capacity that's needed to serve the project. And just as a reminder, this is a land development plan for the conversion of the former Chameleon Club to about 43 individual bedroom units, or really it's student housing, for the Pennsylvania College of Art and Design. So, city staff is recommending that there be a waiver of preliminary plan approval. I know the designer from the team, the development team is here this evening if we have any questions of him as well. And would you like to offer some words as well? Oh, sorry, do you mind hitting the button on the microphone? It should turn red.
Is that on now?
Yes, thank you.
I'm Eldon Stolz, who's the architect for the project, and Matt couldn't be here tonight. He did think it was more appropriate that I be here, since alls we're doing is replacing the sidewalk and planting a tree in terms of land development, so that, he thought it was more appropriate if I, if I'm here. Basically, the Chameleon Club will be converted to student housing. There's actually 25 units, and that's what kicked us into land development. There's 25 units plus the, plus the sewer module kicked us into land development. Of the 25 units, some of those are two-bedroom. So there will be, there will be upwards of 55 students in the facility, residing in the facility. The lower level is classrooms and studios for the college, for Pennsylvania College of Art and Design. The, the main addition that we're doing is making it accessible, putting an elevator in, and on the third floor where the roof deck was for the Chameleon Club, we're adding a unit there. It's also kind of a connection between the elevator and the, and the main part of the building. We do have zoning approval, and we also have Harb, we met with Harb, and they give us their recommendation for approval as well. Any other questions on the project?
Thank you for clarifying that you're exceeding the 40-unit threshold as well. So that's actually the second provision of the preliminary plan waiver that's exceeded in this case. This is an administrative list, basically, that we can administer without planning commission, but in this case, because they exceed the 40-unit threshold, and they also are exceeding the sewer planning module threshold, we're bringing it before the commission with a recommendation for approval. So I guess with that, any discussion from the commission, and then we can move to public comment after that.
Mr. Smith, so we will see this again, then?
Yes, yes, you will. So they'll come back for a final plan approval in the coming months.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Smith, what is the, I don't wanna say reasoning, of going just over the 40 by having the 43? Is there anything in particular, or is it just how it's designed?
Again, I'm not clear on the number of units and how it was specified, but we have, we have 25 bedroom, bedroom units in the building, which will house 55 students. The way that they, I'm not real clear on how it was determined there were 43 individual units, but we, we need that population in order to make this project feasible. We need the population of 55 students in that facility. Currently, the students are living in other buildings in the city, and they would really like to bring them in closer to the college and have a facility where they can add some classroom space. We didn't put student housing on the first floor in the front, which would be on Prince Street, we'd be level with Prince Street. We were allowing for a small commercial space there, and then the classroom, that what is now the, the large two-story space that was the Chameleon Club, main facility, they're gonna use that as a classroom and studio. But in order to make it a viable project, we need to get 55 students in there.
Okay, thank you.
Where are the students parking?
The parking is, as I understand it, in the garage right across the street, if there is parking.
Great.
Most of the students do not drive, and we're also parking all their bicycles inside the building, so there's a, there's a bicycle rack inside the building for them.
That was my next question, where are the bikes going? Glad to hear that there's bike parking.
Uh, do we, just 'cause we are asking some questions, do we happen to have any preliminary drawings of what's going?
Well, we do, and we can, if the commission would really like to see them, we can pull them up. This claimer there is, because the building footprint is not changing, it's a fully built-out site, it stretches from Prince to Water Street, if you're familiar with the Chameleon Building, Chameleon Club formerly. The only thing that's being done is a replacement of sidewalk and planting of one street tree. There's really, there's nothing else that's happening as part of the land development except that. So it's a rather unexciting plan, given that there's no new building or anything, but certainly, i- if the, if the commission has questions about what's in the plan, we can pull it up. Again, this will come back to you as a final plan approval in the coming months after we finish our review at the staff level.
Okay, the, the only reason I ask is 'cause, um, I think the, there's a few things I'm curious about, but I'm sure we'll talk about those at the final review. I'm just curious right now which side the commercial space is gonna be on, if that's gonna be on the Water Street side or the Queen Street side?
Be on the Prince Street side, and it would be only on the north section of the, the building is actually made up of two sections, and it'll be on the north side of that front building. They're, they're allowing us the space that goes into that main, it used to be in order to, I guess where most of the music events happen, I've never been there for one of those, but I hear it was pretty exciting. Where they, where that space is, they're allowing the front area so students could enter through that, into that space without having to go through the entire building. So on the south side of Prince Street, that will be, which is the facade that has the faux stone, that will be the side where they'll use that as a preamble room for that, for that large classroom space. On the right side, which currently has the red canopy, the commercial space will be on the right side of that.
Okay, and then I think this is the last question I have, is there gonna be any facade restoration work done to like remove the stone at all?
We certainly would like to. If you go out now, there's a test that was done, and it's gonna damage the brick unfortunately, but we're gonna try to find someone who can take off that stone and refurbish the brick. It's not required by Harb, Harb, the only review they had was the, the addition that we're doing on Water Street, but they appreciated the fact that we're trying to bring that front of the building back up to nicer standards.
Okay, great, thank you.
And since you did mention the addition, I'll just clarify, there, there's a portion on, I think it's the third floor, where there's kind of a notch out in the building, and the college is proposing to just expand the, that top floor into that notched area. So there's no new building footprint, there's no new structure really, it's just a small addition on one of the upper floors, on the rear side, on the Water Street side, and it's visible from the public right away, which required the historical commission approval.
I can see, if I was a student there, I would be very excited about that location, so I look forward to seeing the final plans when you guys are done.
Yeah, we're really happy we can refurbish this building for use in the arts. I mean, I think it's just a real appropriate use for that building.
I don't know, the chameleon was pretty fun.
It was, but I guess they didn't make it through COVID, I'm not sure what the story is.
Is there any further discussion from the planning commission?
You can, well, certainly we should invite the public up first, and then you can, you can call for a motion if you'd like, first and second, and there can be any additional discussion. We've kind of already done the discussion ahead of time, but that's all right, yeah.
Okay, so how about it, do I have a motion for the waiver of the preliminary plan for the application of PCAD at student housing at 223 North Water Street?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to waive the preliminary plan application for PCAD student housing at 223 North Water Street.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. With that being said, is there any discussion from the public this evening? Okay, so with that, we'll call this to a formal vote. Mr. Whelan?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Bohm?
Aye.
Mr. Dastra?
You can just say motion carries. Yeah, motion carries.
Motion carries, we're gonna move on with the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have a sketch plan presentation for 347 North Queen Street. We will not be taking a motion on this this evening, so I welcome the presenters up to
Good evening, I'm Gary Weaver, Weaver with Tippets Weaver Architects. I'm the architect for this project, 347 North Queen Street. With me tonight-
Excuse me, Mr. Weaver, can you ensure that the microphone is on and speak a little bit louder into it so the folks on the online services can hear us as well? Thank you.
Do I need to start over? With me tonight is the developer of the project, Matthew Richard, back here, and also Cheryl Love with ELA, who's handling the civil and land development portion of the project. And so, we're gonna kind of go through a quick introduction to the project and overview. This is kind of an abbreviated version of what was presented to the historical commission, just to give you an overview of the project, so I'll take care of that, and then I think Cheryl's gonna take care of any of the land development issues, and then we can address any questions that you might have. So, to start with, the first slide that I have up here just shows the aerial of the site. This area right in here is the project site, which is the corner of Lemon and North Queen. It's directly diagonal across from the Belvedere. This site was actually part of a larger condominium project that was done, I think it was started around 2008, 2009, called North Gate. North Gate included these townhouse properties that are here on Lemon Street. It included the renovation of this warehouse structure back in here, and then also these properties that are along North Queen Street. So can we go to the next slide, please? This is an aerial view looking down at the site. Again, the site that we're dealing with is this portion right here, North Queen Street in this location, Lemon Street coming across here. The rest of the North Gate project is this area that's kind of right there. This parcel was separated out from the rest of the condominium, so it's a separate parcel at this point. It's about 105 feet in one direction, I think 110 feet in the other direction. And we go to the next slide. Just a couple aerial views that we're showing in here, when we were presenting before, we did a conceptual review with the historic commission in April. One of the things we were concerned about at that time is really talking about the massing and scale of the buildings, and we talked about that just a little bit. This gives you sort of context, the yellow block that's in the center here kind of gives you some idea of the rough massing of the project that we're proposing. We did identify a number of other projects that are within that area, that are obviously identified by the numbers, ranging between six and 12 stories. So if we go to the next slide, this is obviously, that was looking south, this is looking north, and again, the project is right here, kind of a rough idea of the size of the building, tucked in right there. And again, as you go north from there, you can see there are a considerable number of larger buildings, largely the hospital buildings and some others on the kind of west of the site. These are some photographs that just show the existing site, and so you can see from Lemon Street up here, what's on the site right now is surface parking, a little ticket booth that's there, and then down below on North Queen, again, the edge of the North Gate project is here, and then over here you can see the townhouses beyond. Next slide, please. Usually, our office likes to do these sort of, sort of collage elevations to kind of look at the context that we're dealing with, and so we really outlined all of this block of North Queen right here, and this would be Lemon Street at this location, and as we turn the corner, this is the Lemon Street elevation up here. We oftentimes look at these just to try and understand the patterns of the street, the scale, and that sort of thing. Some of the things that we were looking at in this particular diagram were the modules of the street, because obviously the city of Lancaster developed, and these modules sometimes in a rowhouse width, it might have been 20 feet wide or something like that, and as you get into, closer to the center of town, the modules get wider, so we're starting to look at that. The other thing that we'll note on this is, at this level, you can see we sort of identified this, pretty much this entire block has a storefront that's essentially 14 feet to 16 feet high. It extends pretty much the entire way along North Queen Street. We're proposing that it might turn the corner, which is pretty typical of the way many of the commercial strips are, as they then turn into more residential areas. I'm gonna jump into the plans and kind of walk through the plans. This is the first floor of the building. Again, North Queen is over here, Lemon Street across the top. There's currently an entrance off of Lemon Street that's right here, which we're gonna maintain. The back portion of the site, we're doing surface parking at this point, which will be under the building. The other functions that we have on this first floor level are along Queen Street. We have a couple commercial spaces, a corner space which we think could be a cafe, possibly a small restaurant. We have another space here that may be a fitness center. The upper floors of the building will be all residential units, and so we have floors two through seven, which are residential rentals. We, we have everything from studios, which are about 450 square feet, up to one, the largest one-bedroom is the one that's on the corner, which is about 800 square feet. Everything's arranged around, if we could go back. Everything's arranged around this sort of corridor that goes through the center, and then vertical cores that go up through, and then to the top floor, we have, on the top floor, we have a roof deck where these vertical pieces come up through. The roof deck is kind of taking on a different configuration at this point, but it will be a piece that's on the roof up in here. Much of the rest of the roof that's not covered by mechanical units and roof deck will be green roof. And you can see this area in the back here is kind of notched out, and that's open to down below. Next slide, please. And so then we have a couple quick conceptual studies. These were the early versions of what the building might look like. Again, you can see at the lowest level, we have a storefront, largely glass, a canopy piece that sort of makes the entrance at the corner. We are thinking that the bulk of the elevations that face North Queen and Lemon Street will be a masonry veneer, and as we get up on the building, we're sort of breaking down the massing by making some changes in material at the top, and sort of carrying a cornice line to the building starts to step down as it comes into the rest of the block. This is the elevation on Lemon Street. Next slide, please. And then the rear elevation, this is actually from the south elevation, so this would be as you're coming up North Queen Street. North Queen would be this location over here. This portion of the building extends above the North Gate properties. We do have a kind of end elevation here where we thought we might end up with a painted, some sort of graphic or some sort of, originally the idea was some sort of graphic that made reference to some of the historical graphics that we'd see on end elevations, painted end elevations that we saw in, in the city of Lancaster. And then this is the elevation to the east, and then the final view that we have is just a, an initial rendering of what it might look like from, if we're standing in front of the Belvedere looking across the street. So we will be going back to the historical commission. At this point, I think we're scheduled, we think we're gonna be scheduled for October for that final presentation, to go back to historical commission.
Good evening, Cheryl Love with ELA Group. With regards to this site, the existing site is on the screen. As Gary mentioned, the width, the total property area is approximately .26 acres, so it's, there's a red boundary around it on the screen. There are a number of existing stormwater connections and pipes that are conveyed through the site currently. These are downspouts from the adjacent building underground into that existing inlet, as well as taking on some stormwater facilities through current easements from the property just immediately east, and all of those are conveyed out to Lemon Street. We are actually rerouting some of those internal of our property, but essentially, the same exit point would be maintained, and we've been working with city staff, Brian Harner and others in Stormwater Department with regards to that location for utilities. As this is on the screen, we would be seeking to remove the two street trees along Queen, as well as the two smaller trees along Lemon, in order to facilitate the proper spacing and addition of what we'll see later on a plan here, with eight overall total street trees every 25 feet on center, as is required. There is an existing access point at the rear as an emergency that is gated, and we would look to maintain that gate situation as well. So, this current plan existing does show two separated entrance and exits with a ticket booth that Gary had shared in the photos. Our drive would essentially be in that same location, but it would actually be narrowed and condensed into one driveway in and out, which you'll see here in a second. So this is a, a view of the layout plan. From a coloration standpoint, the dark building is what's physically at ground level. The lighter gray shade depicts the remaining floor levels above, so from second through seventh story, that footprint is the entirety, but we wanted to focus and make sure it was understood, the exact portions that were at ground level itself, and as Gary had noted, this was the area that's open airspace above. A couple other key points, we would be providing proper brick abanding and sidewalks along all sides of this frontage. Those are new street tree openings with structural soil shading behind and, and proper sidewalks and whatnot. And then, from an ADA standpoint, although parking's not technically required, we are electing to provide a total of 18, that includes one van accessible ADA space, which is located here with a proper VanWit's aisle that is able to bring, all residents can enter through this door into the lobby space, and then the elevator space and stair towers to the floors above are immediately there. There's a package room at the front that allows through these doors some access to be controlled for package delivery from Queen Street. There's a requirement for bicycle parking, we've calculated that based on numbers of residential rooms, and the bicycles are all contained within the building, and there's some resident storage space there as well, so they'll all be secured as well as being under roof and, and met inside the building itself. A few more other areas, mechanical space and whatnot, are at the ground floor level there. So, we're looking on this plan, gives you a little bit of an idea of similar depiction of the building itself, but a little bit more with where we're heading with our stormwater piping and whatnot. So, we would pick up the piping that was previously coming into the site and out. and out. We would route that inside of our site, but hug the perimeter of our, of our site with the piping. So we would convey the current roof drainage that's in those pipes underground through. And we would also pick up with another stormwater structure, the piping at property line that is conveying some of the offsite. All of that offsite would be conveyed around and then into a new inlet that is dropped in the location of where the current piping was exiting our site out to the same system in Lemon Street. From a stormwater facility standpoint, we've looked at infiltration testing. We're working very tightly with the geotechnical company that provided the testing. We are able to infiltrate in this zone that's dashed green in the back portion. So we have an infiltrating stormwater system underground at that location. The rest of the pieces that you see here are actually solid capped. But we have another underground storage facility that does not infiltrate, but it is storing volume and capacity of water in this green zone here. And then all of that that we've managed ultimately joins and exits out to Queen, I'm sorry, to Lemon Street. As Gary noted, he did share the roof plan from his earlier drawing. This drawing depicts more of the streetscape itself, but from a stormwater standpoint, approximately the northern third of this rooftop level right now is also envisioned as green roof. We've been running through calculations with that. And the combination of these various stormwater facilities, we are actually able to get very close to what the ordinance requirements are from a stormwater standpoint. So we've pushed very hard on this to maximize every space we can in, in working towards meeting those parameters. So there's some of the nuts and bolts of the site plan itself. Other utilities, we've worked already with staff, again, Brian Harner and Ben Perrywin from Sewer and Water Departments. Those connections would be through the northern portion out to those systems that exist in Lemon Street as well. We've received capacity approvals for those items currently. And we have our sewer module at the city and at the county, working through their review processes prior to going to DEP. From a streetscape standpoint, we have proposed these eight trees. I believe we are short one or so that would be a fee in lieu of. We have received city staff's comments on the sketch plan, and we're working our way through those and fine tuning those as we move towards engineering a final plan. There are some good comments, provide some more clearance and shift these trees approximately 10 feet from drive opening to the left on each side, just to help improve the workability and the tree canopies. You can see this zone here is the narrowed driveway in and out, but it's essentially in the similar location as the current driveway. But although it's being narrowed, that will go through traffic commission approval as well. I think I hit most of the immediate key points that we were looking to touch on. And we will continue to address the city's various comments that we have received to date, both architecturally as well as from a site plan standpoint. Anything else, Gary or Matthew? Other than, we'd open to questions from the planning commission?
Mr. Smith, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I do have some questions for the applicant, but I'll just start off by saying, just as a reminder, this is part of the sketch plan process that leads us towards a preliminary plan waiver. They've met the requirements of the sketch plan submission, and we do have a comment letter to them. A couple of questions. Thank you for the detailed presentation. This is the first, maybe the first stormwater system that I've seen underneath a building. I don't know, there might, I think that I've looked at. So can you just give a little bit of context around that? Why is that happening? What is unusual about it? What is safe about it, since it's under a foundation?
Yeah. Mandali, can you go back to the one plan back, I think, where the, that's perfect. Oops, forward one, please, where the green outlines are dashed. It might be easier to look at. We've worked very closely with the geotechnical company, the structural engineers and the architectural team, to understand the geology and what the soils have in this location. The only area where we truly can do some infiltrating, again, it's not really under building. We are, so I want to make sure I'm clear in how I present that. This zone in the back, this small square, is under pavement of parking, just like any other outside stormwater infiltrating facility would be. So the building itself and its, its structural components are not in this immediate vicinity. In fact, we're maintaining the recommended clearances from any of the building peers and the foundation systems from the structure itself. What you see here is true watertight storage of stormwater itself. So it's an enclosed, completely watertight system. And that is simply to over attenuate and to hold and control the stormwater volumes and capacities, and then release that at the acceptable rates out into the storms system in order to work towards meeting the stormwater ordinance. So it's a completely self-contained watertight system that's truly under the building, and it has clearances as well from all of the structural components.
How much water is that system able to manage? Is it the whole entire building and all the runoff from that?
Combination of three different things. So the infiltrating, yes, that helps meet portion of it. The piping system here is watertight, controlled, and, and holding back the stormwater. And then, if you imagine, we didn't draw the green line on because it's getting a little confusing, but the top one-third of this roof is green roof. And we've looked at various systems, different media depths and plantings for that. So those combinations are what is controlling our stormwater and getting us extremely close to meeting the ordinance requirements that we need to for stormwater for the project. The remaining stormwater that I first described, this other piping system is simply conveying what was already being conveyed from offsite around our facilities and out to the same piping system as it is currently happening. We don't have the ability to pull any offsite stormwater into our systems and control theirs as well. So we're simply continuing that flow as it currently exists, but we are controlling ours through those three different components. So all of the roof water, as it leaves the green roof and the building systems itself, would be conveyed first into our infiltration system. And then, as anything is not able to be managed there, it flows into the storage, the watertight storage. And then, all of those three pieces together allow us to meet what's extremely close to meeting what the city's requirements are.
What's the maximum capacity? Or I guess, you know, if we have an extreme, weather continues to be more and more extreme, stormwater continues to be a huge pollution contributor into our Conestoga and our Susquehanna rivers, which are also community assets. We want to keep those waters safe and healthy, right? Our city unfortunately has a combined sewer system that has big problems and adds to those pollution challenges. We're not the only city in our region that does that. So I'm just, 72, a 72, 7-story building is a big building. And I know that it's already primarily pervious surface. Is that right? Is it pervious? It would be impermeable.
Impermeable.
Thank you. Impermeable. So my concern is with the, the extreme rainfalls that we've been having and the stormwater systems that you're saying, and the fact that you're, you're just noting that you're almost there, you're almost there. I'd really like to see us over and, and then take into consideration some of those bigger rainfalls and those storm systems to see how can we, and what can this project do in order to help those waters later down the stream stay a little bit cleaner?
Understand.
I'm Matt Richards. I'm the developer. I just wanted to address something that I think may not be entirely clear, but we are improving the stormwater system versus what is existing now. So this is not adding anything that isn't already in the system. We are actually removed, we are over retaining and removing water, and it should result in a better system for the city as designed currently.
Yeah, I might add to that. We are also working with Brian Harner and have clarified some of his notations within our sewer capacity letter. When I say we're almost meeting, we are meeting from a volume type of control. There's very technical things related to loading ratios and things that relate to water quality that are extremely difficult in the city itself to truly meet all of those little parameters. But we are also accepting on some additional controls that are above and beyond the ordinance requirement as they relate to removing portions of some additional stormwater flow in order to compensate for the increased sewer capacity at our site. So if you picture sewer and stormwater going into that system, so our increase to our sewer is also being controlled into our stormwater systems themselves to take that load off of, that additional load off of the combined sewer storm systems that are out front. I understand where your, where your concern is, but stormwater is extremely technical. And Douglas and Mandali listen to our, our detailed calculations. The presentations are well reviewed every time we submit. We are really over detaining based on, on where we are, but there's loading ratios and a few other technicalities that are extremely difficult to meet in this, in the city to, to the latter of that small portion of the ordinance. I don't know, Douglas, am I explaining that in any better way?
I think you're doing a good job of that. We basically don't let anyone off the hook when it comes to stormwater. But I really do appreciate the questions, and certainly going above and beyond in any ways that we can is, you know, better for our river systems. I do have a couple of other questions, just about the building footprint. I want to make sure I understand why certain decisions were made there. On, in the northeast corner of the building, it's pulled back just a little bit, and there's some parking spaces, it looks like, that are exposed there. Is this a building code decision because of setback for openings, or how did that little tooth get taken out there?
It is not a building code issue necessarily, although we did pull it back so we can get some windows in that elevation. And so if that actually ran right up to the property line, we would not be able to have windows on that east elevation. Also, in that notch, there's a window on the north elevation that goes into a unit that is arranged on the backside of the building. And so that also gets a window into that unit as well. And so it's about getting natural light into those two units.
Okay, got it. I figured that was the case there. And then my other question is about the southeast portion of the lot. Did you say that gated driveway access would remain?
Yeah.
Okay. And just curious, what is the, the relationship that's going on there? Is this another exit out of the property, or is there a tenant there that's accessing those parking spaces? What, what is the purpose of the gate and the connection?
Trying to address this. So there has always been a gate there.
Yeah.
There is a recorded easement of some sort, which is very unclear, that talks about emergency access. And so we did a little bit of research on that to try and figure out where that came about and what that was, what initiated it, what it really meant. And so we've had a number of meetings with the building code and also the fire bureau. And at this point, what we've gotten from the fire chief, Fire Chief Hutchinson, is that they do need a way to get an aerial apparatus vehicle into the site so that they could access the building behind this building, which would be part of the North Gate project. What that means when you read the fire code is there's a limitation on minimum height and also width to be able to get that apparatus in. We actually raised the first floor height of the building up to 16 feet floor to floor to make sure that we can provide that access through the building. It meets the requirements for a dead end access. I suppose you could open the gate and go through at that point, although maneuverability probably inside the site becomes difficult at that point. So.
Okay.
It is not meant to be an access point for vehicles to either go from our property to the North Gate property, or from the North Gate property to go to our property unless it's an emergency.
Okay.
Situation.
Got it. Thank you for the explanation. I might want to dig into that a little bit more another time. Certainly, I would recommend that any encumbrances on the property deeds, easements, et cetera, be represented on the plans, just so we can be working with a full set of information there. But appreciate that explanation for now.
I want to circle back a little bit to make sure I understand the stormwater situation. So I'm understanding that the system's being improved. You had mentioned that, like, this is going to handle everything, any stormwater concerns, it's doing the satisfactory job. But did you say that it's not going to handle, like, anything, I don't know if anything additional is the way I want to say it, but as the chair had mentioned, storms are getting worse?
We, from a volume, from a capacity, from an infiltration, I mean, we're meeting the ordinance in those design parameters. And with the way that the various different storm events that are required to be calculated for stormwater in the ordinance, we are meeting those. And the offsite is, as I explained, that's conveying through. I don't think there should be any issues with that, from what we understand. It's, we are continuing that in its same general configuration as what's happening now.
Okay.
Through the site. It's just, we cannot take the other offsite stormwaters and manage their stormwater as well. So we're keeping it as a separate system. So this piping is an enclosed piping system. And these are simply squares for access points. They're solid lids. They're not accepting any of our stormwater. Our stormwater flows in and gets managed in our own space. But it's simply a routing of, taking the pipes that on our existing plan went like this to an existing inlet and went out.
Right.
It's, it's, it's changing the direction of flow. So all the offsite that went through our site is still being conveyed through, but in a different direction.
Got it. So every, all the offsite stormwater that's currently being managed by the property is being handled just in a different way? And everything that is necessary for the project is being handled in a separate system?
Right, correct.
Okay. The, so my question is, have the, I actually saw in Philadelphia that there's like some tree wells, for example, that are all interconnected and they're able to retain certain volumes of stormwater. Has there been any consideration to do that with these tree wells?
We have, we have proposed that idea to the city on other projects, other similar projects that I've had. I understand, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the city, but I believe that there are opportunities for that that are under consideration. However, those areas are in the street right of way. That's where the street trees are required. So it gets a little murky for us to convey any of our stormwater into the city's right of way when it's our storm infrastructure we should be managing in our site itself. So even though we understand there's a benefit there, as things move forward and, you know, things continue to improve with ordinances and, and other things, maybe there's opportunity there. I think it's something we, we pushed pretty hard on, on a previous project, and we eventually went a different direction. But we understand that that is something that staff at the city is, is considering and looking into. Am I right, Douglas?
Yes, definitely. We're trying to encourage the use of more trees as green infrastructure. We just need to be, they need to be defensible calculations for the EPA, which is overseeing our every move in the city because of our stormwater issue. I do have a couple of other questions here. I noticed that there's a stormwater easement that already runs through the property. Is that right? Underneath the garage? And just wondering if you can speak to whether that's going to continue to exist?
We will, we will need to change that. Like, if Mandali, if you wanted to scoot back to the existing. to the existing.
And is that an easement for the city's access to the existing system, or who is the easement benefiting? And ultimately, the question is, does the building construction over top of it, you know, prohibit the easement? Does that need to be extinguished?
The existing stormwater easement is part of the North Gate condominium project, and is, was designed to allow their runoff from the parking lot that is behind our property to flow through our property and into Lemon. I assume it has to do with grading from the original design when it was all one condominium. There's a second one that flows to the building, from the building to the south, right near where that gate is, and that's for, I believe that's the roof drains, right down there. So the original, as you could see on the current site plan, the stormwater is piped basically into the center of our property and then goes straight out to Lemon. So what our engineers are proposing is to reroute that, maintain its capacity, to allow us to build our own stormwater facilities and improve the situation on our site.
Okay.
To the question?
I think so. So then we'll receive an amended stormwater easement agreement that shows the extinguishment or alteration of that previous easement, and still allow you to proceed with the building over top of it?
Yes.
So, okay, great. And just wanted to clarify, you're taking stormwater from the downspout of an adjacent property there as well, is that right? Is that what's happening?
I believe the building, yeah, that's fine, Mandel. This adjacent building has a scupper at the top, and I believe there's two conveyance pipes down on that building, so we would work to pick those up. Currently, it comes down and transmits through our property, so we would reroute those into a new inlet junction box here with a solid lid, and then that begins to pipe around. And we've sized and looked at the pipe sizing and the various storm events as it relates to that off-site building as well, for the design of that conveyance piping system that runs through our site in a different location, but conveys the same stormwater and whatnot as is currently there.
Got it, thank you. And then my last, I just have one final comment, and I would encourage you to, and I think I mentioned this at the historical commission, to just look at the storefronts along 300 block of North Queen Street, and look at the, how wide each of the storefronts are. One of the intriguing and fun things about this street is that there's storefronts every 10 steps, and that kind of, sort of, constant opportunity for something new to interact with is what makes this a really engaging street. And I think that the commercial unit that you have offered at the corner could probably benefit from being a smaller unit. A lot of, you know, small, like newer retail, especially local retails, are looking, they're looking for more affordable spaces, so the smaller sized unit could potentially, you know, benefit that too. But certainly, I'm no expert in retail, commercial retail, so just a suggestion from a planning standpoint. And then the fitness center, it says "commercial fitness," is that open to the public, or is that just for tenants of the building?
That will be a tenant amenity.
Tenant amenity, okay. So all the more reason then maybe to split that commercial space. If the public is not going to be coming and going from that space, it's really just an opportunity for the public to watch the tenants exercise, which is a little bit less exciting for the general public, and not as much an engaging use. So, okay, I think that concludes my questions for now, but any other commissioning questions?
I'd like to know the vision for your project and what your target demographic is, please.
I could speak to the second. I would probably prefer if you could clarify the first question.
The vision of this project, what are you, you know, at the end of the day, when you complete this project, what are you ultimately trying to serve? How is this going to enhance this particular area of our community? And what do you see happening within this particular building?
Sure. So the city of Lancaster has a severe housing shortage, especially for smaller units. If you will, if you look at market research for this area, you'll see that rents probably climbed 15% to 20% last year, year over year. That's because there's no new supply coming online, and there's increased demand. There's increased demand because you have such a great city. So one of the things that we want to do is to provide housing at a decent price point that.
Do you have any idea what those price points are?
Well, we're talking a couple of years in the future, so it's a little difficult to say, but.
So but you would be working out some of those numbers now with the, working with the metrics in the background?
What I could say for sure is, we would expect to be in line with other projects that are already up and running in town. So this is not going to be the most expensive building to rent in, in the city. Your average renter here will probably be one person living in an apartment, maybe two. They will be making somewhere between $45,000 and $80,000 a year, depending on which unit they select. So this is not for millionaires, this is not affordable housing. It is for the middle of the city, and it will be bringing life to downtown, or adding life to downtown, bringing people to a very vibrant block. And they will probably, you know, be people who are professional, they could be city employees, they could be young attorneys, they could be nurses at the hospital, they could be, I would assume, anyone like that could be renting in a building like this at those price points.
So I understand, and I do appreciate the fact that we, there is a shortage of smaller units for younger professionals getting started. When we have that, there's a high turnover of, you know, of units within those particular buildings. I would love to see something, I mean, we are a growing city and a glorious city, right? And we're also a family city. You know, I'd like to see some mix of units in here, and I would love to see something that could accommodate, you know, a mom, a dad, and a child or two. You know, something along those building, something along those lines, you know? And then I also would challenge you to think, you know, of, seven stories in that particular neighborhood is gigantic, and let's just say 72 units. If you have two people per unit, you're looking at about, let's just guess and say, about 125 people maybe live in this building. 18 parking spaces, that's a lot, it's just a lot in that particular area. So I want you to think about how that's going to impact the other people that have lived there and will live there, you know, for years to come. I think that an apartment and some housing units on that particular parcel is a fantastic use of space. I question the size of it. And then the other question that I would also have is that first floor commercial space at the gym. I would recommend that be something more public.
Let me address those, because you've mentioned maybe seven different points there. First, in terms of unit sizing, you actually have a lot of larger units in this town. They're in the form of townhouses. And so what you have right now is you have people who are forced to pay up for a townhouse to rent, who probably only need one bedroom at this time of their life, where they have to find roommates. So you're having a mismatch of renters to product right now, because there are not enough smaller units in town. There are buildings that, new construction buildings that have two bedrooms and three-bedroom units, and they're sitting on the market right now, currently unrented, in a time where rents are climbing and everything is being rented.
I want to jump in. So I agree with Ms. Soufert's desire for more mixed use, like mixed type of housing. And I understand that there is a mismatch between products and the consumer, but moving is sometimes one of the most, if not, is a consistently expensive cost for people as they go through their housing products in their lifetime. And for someone, or for, let's just say, someone moves in here as an individual, it would be ideal for them to be able to relocate within the same building and be rooted in their community, as opposed to needing to bounce around. So I'm not saying that there isn't a shortage of the single bedrooms and studios, and I like seeing the volume of that, but I do think that there could be a fusion of some of these units on floors.
Can I, can I address that for a second? I've run hundreds and hundreds of units. I've seen transfers within the building maybe four or five times. It's very, very uncommon. When people move, they move for space, they don't usually move from a one-bed to a two-bed, they move from a one-bed to a small house, a studio to a two-bed. They're not, they're not moving within the same building. I just don't see it when, from my, from my experience renting out apartments, it's very uncommon.
I think the Lancaster city market specifically has a big need for family. I'm going to use the word affordable, but not affordable from a finance, HUD financed or subsidized fashion, but we need some reasonably priced apartment opportunities that provide low maintenance for families who, you know, whether they choose to live there for three years, or five years, or 10 years, or call that home for the rest of their lives, I think having those, it would be just, I'd love to see what you could think about.
It's not financially viable, so I could tell you right now.
Mr. Richards, do you mind if I just jump in for one moment? Just a couple of sort of guidelines for us. We do not have purview unfortunately over bedroom count within units. Certainly, the planning commission can explore that and zoning. I think the city has not taken that approach in the past, just to allow developers to respond to market conditions, because at the end of the day, of course, they need these units to be rented as well. We have conducted two housing studies that have identified a huge shortage of single units. And part of, so developers are also responding to that information that they've gathered and that the city's gathered with two different consultants, and part of the pressure for families is exactly what Mr. Richards said. Many of the townhomes that are occupied are single-person families, according to the US Census. So providing more of these units for newcomers or for people in our community certainly does create a little bit more slack, ideally, in the market for family-sized units, which are these two- and three- and four-bedroom homes that we're fortunate to have in the city. More anecdotal, anecdotally, one of the new construction projects that did include a subset of two-bedroom units, about 104 single units, sorry, there were 104 total units, and about 80% of them were single units. The slowest to lease, and it took about, maybe almost a full year to lease the final units, were all two-bedroom units. And so that was even pre-COVID that those came on, so we had a very, very strong market here, you know, there were no inhibitions about moving. So we know from that as well, that the new units just are challenging. Now, that said, there still may be a need for more affordable, affordably priced family units, and that is an area that's, I think, worthy of more exploration, or housing and secure families, and I think other subsets. But if I may just direct the commission's attention back to just more of the land development topics, only for the sake of the public to also be able to weigh in, and we still have a little bit more business to get to this evening.
So I have a question. Well, two things. Has the visibility of the entrance and exit been considered? I mean, Lemon Street is a small street, there's a small alley next to it, and you're saying that this is a narrow entry and exit. Has visibility been considered?
Especially with two trees right next to it?
The trees are shifting to the side, I think I spoke to that earlier.
You did.
So we will be complying with that, but we have looked at the site distances and measured that, and we do have adequate, adequate location for visibility on those areas. I would note that one other item, and I know Gary touched on, the parking inside will not truly itself be visible from the street. That was a review comment. So this is, this will feel like building facade either through screening on the building facade itself, but that was evident in the, some of the elevations that were shared from the architectural plan. So this plan looks very deceiving because of the way the parking is depicted there, but there is essentially the facade along that front edge and a garage door closure that's being looked at carefully in design, that will be automated for the residents up and down as they come and go, but we have looked at site distance.
Site distance, okay. And then the other thing is, is there, are there any ideas for the commercial space since what looked like a community use fitness center, and finding out that it's an amenity for the residents, now there's only this one commercial space? Any ideas for what that might be?
To an extent, it depends on what retail tenants seek to rent the space. We don't, we don't choose the tenant necessarily, they choose us. We're open to any host of tenancies, and if you know someone, you want to put someone in there, happy to talk about it. We have no idea right now.
Okay. To know that you're open to anything is interesting, but thank you.
Douglas, I'd like to make.
No, that's good.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a comment. I think we're, for the whole, you know, rental unit size debate, market, affordable, all that kind of stuff, I just want to note that I think we're throwing all this stuff around. I haven't seen any kind of a formalized study of what's actually needed in the city. Is that something that's even available somewhere? So we can see, like, affordable first, like, affordable one room, or whatever?
Yeah, for housing.
Affordable, bigger house, you know, basically cross tabs of affordable, market, high-end that are really in demand in the city?
Definitely. I can arrange a presentation for the commission of our two affordability studies that we've done, or their housing studies, and, you know, they look at a variety of different factors, family size, they look at housing stock throughout the city in different census tracts, what's existing, as well as vacancy and rental rates. You know, we have very, very low vacancy rates in the city compared to most. I mean, it's an unhealthy, low level of vacancy, and in other words, all of the housing is taken. The amount of turnover that's happening is very minimal and doesn't provide a lot of opportunity for people to find opportunities, which of course increases the price of housing. So that housing, I'm happy to arrange that. I mean, just a couple of the highlights, the mismatch that Mr. Richards mentioned is definitely one of the biggest takeaways from that study. The other one is just the supply. I think it was estimated that somewhere around 2,500 units were needed to meet the demand that's there, to get the vacancy rate to a more reasonable amount. And really, that housing is, there are certain income bands where it's needed, but there's also the need to just create slack in the market so that there can be price adjustment over time. So, you know, any, and to some degree, any units are good units, to be honest, as long as they're filled. But certainly workforce housing or middle-market housing is really advantageous, I think, to the city. It's needed at all price points. So I will follow up with you on that. I will set up a time for the planning commission to meet and get a review of that information. And I'm happy to send an email in advance if folks want to take a look at the studies.
I would just like to add also that you have such a shortage of housing supply here, and it may not, it may not be totally apparent to you if you're not in the rental market, but apartments are leasing somewhere between 75 and 100 days prior to lease, when a notice is given. And that's not a normal market condition. That is the result of a severe supply shortage. Most apartments in this country rent 45 days in advance of it vacating. So you have people clamoring for apartments right now in this price point. There is a, there's a real demand for it because people need it.
And I did a quick calculation, you said $45,000, $80,000 a year is roughly the income of somebody living in one of these apartments?
Depending on which unit.
So at a 25% of an annual salary, that'd be between about $1,000 and $1,600 a month? Do you think that's about right?
I think the national rule is, is one-third, it would be 33%, but somewhere, it'll be with a one in the front, if that's what you're asking.
So, I mean, I'm doing the math in my head, so between $1,300 and $2,000 a month then? Okay.
I mean, as of today, you know, I don't know what, yeah. I mean, as of today, I, you know, I don't know what, yeah, yeah.
So more, more questions, some comments. Why were the stair, why were the stairs put where they were, specifically the southmost stairs?
So the question is about the organization?
Yeah, and like, feel free to speak more openly about the whole building. I want to say I actually enjoy the fact that the elevator's been placed pretty centrally. But the the reason why I'm asking about the stairs is actually because I have, personally, I think that having multiple sides of a unit, which I see you did, and I appreciate the setback to include lighting in those other apartments that gives them two walls of light. But the reason why I ask about where the stairs were located is because if there's potential to reorient them and potentially use them to increase natural lighting access to more units, I think that's appealing and would increase the value of the apartments.
Yep, so I can speak to a couple of the organizational issues. Obviously, we have the ground floor plan. Maybe we start with the ground floor plan, then we'll come back to this plan. But on the ground floor plan, you can see we have the main residential entrance from the street is really here. It makes a lot of sense to get this central core pretty much right in the center of the building as much as we possibly can. And this stair tower we got down in here because we have to have a certain distance between the stair towers, and there's issues of dead ends and that sort of thing. When we go up to the second or upper floors, we can kind of talk through that. We have everything set up so that essentially the corridor comes down through the center. It's double loaded with units on either side, and so each unit obviously has the entrance side here, and then obviously the outside and the windows to the exterior. We did, as we talked about earlier, we did notch out this corner so that we could get windows in this unit and also additional windows in this unit. We at one point had a stair tower out here, which of course takes away from the parking on the first floor, and so we were trying to keep the stair towers out of the parking footprint, which is why this one got shifted in. There's a limitation on dead ends, which is pretty much what established this location in relationship to this corridor. And so that's how that was kind of set up. And the stair tower at this end was the most remote location to get those exits as far apart from each other. We did, we are showing a little notch down in here.
Yes.
And that again is to get natural light into the circulation areas as we go up through the building.
Yeah, if there's, if there's any way, so generally speaking, not just relevant to the stairs, but if there's any way to create more natural light, even if it is through unconventional means such as creating additional spaces, that would be interesting to see, and I think would be fairly novel for recent development, to see different architectural manners of creating spaces for light.
Just another comment on that. I mean, we've worked on a handful of multi-unit housing projects like this recently in Lancaster and other central PA cities. Many of them are a similar footprint where you have a certain width that makes the most sense for a one bedroom or for a studio. These units are set up where we have a good floor-to-floor height, and so we have good height in each of the units. And at the end of each one of these, you can see, so here's a unit that's about 18 feet wide, and we've got three windows that are approximately 12 feet overall and about eight feet tall. And so there's very large windows in these units. And so the natural light for these units has been something that was kind of dictated right at the front end. Since they're relatively small units, we want them to feel spatial, and feel spatially larger and have good natural light.
Okay, good. Then this is more of a a comment, and that don't, please no one take this too personally, but this is more of a philosophy I have, generally speaking. I also find frustration, if that's the sentiment carried forward. I find frustration with amenities that are exclusive for residents of a of a building because I think that those are opportunities to increase the amount of connections people make within their community. So that that gym space on the bottom is frustrating to to know it's intended exclusively for the tenants of the building. Because sometimes those those spaces go underutilized by the tenants themselves, like, and people may still feel inclined to go and get a gym membership elsewhere. So just as a, a comment, like, that's not necessarily a design or a operational choice that sparks the light within me. Yeah.
I have three more, I think, rather quick questions. Can you tell me exactly how emergency vehicles will enter and exit or how that will work? I'm I'm not sure I fully understand how that flow of traffic will happen. And while you're on the emergency vehicles, I'm also wondering about trash traffic as well.
So let's talk about emergency vehicles. I think that we do not really expect that emergency vehicles will be coming into our site for any emergency issues for our site. We think the only reason emergency vehicle will be coming into this site is to get to the site behind us. And so what we're proposing is, we're proposing essentially a fire lane that's here. This opening here meets the requirements of the fire code to get their largest piece of equipment into the site from here and get to this point at the back of the site, either going through this gate or not going through this gate, but providing access to this area that's over here, which is our understanding of what the emergency easement, emergency access easement was about. When we went to the fire bureau to sort through that, no one really understood why that easement was established in the first place, but they did say, oh, that would work if we need to get a, an aerial apparatus vehicle into the site behind. Okay, trash, let's talk about trash. So on, let's go to the upper floor.
Just one second. So you're telling me that you don't anticipate your electrical room will ever be on fire? Okay, I'm just.
I suppose that's a possibility, yeah, yeah, yeah. They'll they'll access it from the street.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I think quite honestly, for this building, if you were fighting a fire in this building, you probably don't want to be here or here as opposed to here.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know if you can pull up the plan that I'm looking at here. The, if I'm understanding correctly, your emergency vehicles are going to enter and exit through the essentially the garage.
Through the garage, that's correct.
And that's, this is an enclosed building space?
It is an.
That's open in the back?
So the parking is at the first floor level, and there's no other construction in this area on the first floor. Everything is, the second floor above this is 16 feet above this. And so the opening at this location is 13 six, which is the required height that's required to get the largest piece of equipment that the fire department has into that space. And I do have to say, originally, the floor-to-floor height was more like 14 feet. We had some discussion about the height of the building. I think we wanted some additional height, and when we had the discussions with the fire department, they said what they really needed was 13 and a half feet to get, you know, that's what the fire code requires for the aerial apparatus.
Interesting. How about the trash? How will trash be collected?
So let's start on the upper floors, and I can kind of take you through how trash, we think trash is going to be handled. Right now, in the center of the building, we have this center core, stair tower, elevator, mechanical room, janitor's closet. We have a trash chute right here and recycling that's here. This is getting rearranged somewhat where all this stuff is moving into an enclosed room, but it will be in this general location. And so every tenant can take their trash to trash chute at this location and get their recyclables at this point. Recyclables will have to be handled by building management where the recyclables get taken down the elevator on a certain schedule. And so if we go back down to the first floor, that ends up down in this location right here, and we're expecting to have a compactor in that location and two containers. And so we'll be able to run the trash down, compact it into a container in here, the containers can be switched out, and we think that when it's collected, these containers will be rolled out and they'll be picked up from the street at this location. Typically, that's something that you negotiate with the hauler. Some haulers will come in and actually roll things out, sometimes management rolls out the containers, but it can be done either way.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware of that, interesting. Two more questions, bikes. You noted that there was bike parking. How many, 72 units, single units, I'm thinking these are going to target a younger demographic. I myself like to consider myself a younger demographic, and I ride my bike all over this place.
I'm still pretending I'm younger as well.
Where will, where will bike parking be located? And approximately how many bikes do you think you'll be able to park in there?
So what we're showing in this particular plan is we had the bikes in this location, so they were in the garage, they were covered. We have since moved the bikes from this location to a location in here. This is tenant storage, and so you'd be able to come in from the parking area and get to the tenant storage, or come from the lobby area and get to the tenant storage. The bikes will also be in this location. We have a minimum of 15 spaces. We may end up getting more than that, but where we're at right now is to have at least 15 parking spaces that are going to end up right in here.
Okay, I I assume that garage is all lit up as well. I mean, I I've learned never to assume anything in my life, so I'm.
I'm sorry.
The garage where the folks are parking, there's plenty of light in there, so it's safe. Last question, parking. There's 18 spaces, you said? What type of relationship do you anticipate building with the two parking garage, is it one or two parking garages that are in really close proximity to this? Two, yeah, so I'm assuming that we will form some type of relationship and encourage our residents to park in those building or in those lots?
Yes, I spoke to parking authority. They were ecstatic with having more potential parking renters, especially for the new garage that just went in around the corner directly to the south of us. And it's it's not a formal agreement. They are not doing those right now, but they were, they welcome our residents, and we are able to enter and to sign leases ourselves for spots and rent them back to the, to ensure availability.
Do you anticipate doing that as part of your leasing agreement to encourage the residents that are going to move into this or occupy this building to park in those locations?
To some extent, yeah, I would assume so.
I have questions that I think aren't the place to ask here. Do you guys have like emails or like business cards so I could reach? I have, I have yours.
You can funnel all to me, and I will certainly get them to our design team. Douglas Mandali, most people at the city have my emails splashed everywhere, so you're more than welcome to. I have a business card I can share again with you tonight, however you would like to do that, but you're more than welcome to send them my direction, and then I can funnel them to the rest of the team, no problem.
Okay, and no disrespect to that. I actually, part of why I want your email specifically is you, you have me thinking a lot about stairs right now, and I would actually love to have an external conversation about stairs. Okay, thank you.
If there's no other comments from our commissioners, may I welcome any comments from the public, please?
Good evening. My name is Diane Umble. I am the president of the Northgate Homeowners Association, and I'm bringing you a number of concerns we have with this project.
Excuse me, Diane, I'm so sorry. Would you please state the block that you live on as well? Your name and the block that you live on?
Yeah, we live on the 300 block.
Thank you.
Our, the Northgate buildings are, our address is Christian, North Christian Street. So 336 North Christian Street is where we live. I'll make a couple of comments and some questions, and then maybe, I don't know if we want to take these one at a time or whether I just should speak, and then we can discuss.
So you'll have about three minutes, and if you want to list your questions now, we can jot them down and address them accordingly when you're finished.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to register concern about the mass and the scale of this project. We question the assertion that it's in keeping with the mass and scale of the 300 block of North Queen. And to compare mass and scale with a reference to the hospital seems like the exception rather than the rule. So that's a concern. I'm especially concerned about the discussion of the easement. It is my understanding that the easement into our parking lot is because for fire and safety. And if you know Christian Street, if you know North Christian Street, it is a very narrow street. And so the concern is that we have the kind of emergency access into our parking lot that is needed. And there are times when we have actually used that easement for egress, especially, for example, the many months when Christian Street was closed, or portions of Christian Street were closed, including the access to our entrance for repaving and for utility upgrades. So the easement is especially important to us as we go forward with discussing this, both for emergency access but also for emergency egress. We had a time this winter when our gate was frozen solid and we couldn't get out onto Christian Street. And so that egress through what is now the parking lot was very important to us. I'm especially also concerned about the stormwater discussion because as I look at these plans, our stormwater runs, I think we're the off-site stormwater that they're referencing. And so our stormwater runoff, especially from our parking lot, appears to go into the proposed, the proposed stormwater plan for this building and appears to go through the building now because it exists currently as part of the the process. So stormwater is again a concern of ours because our stormwater flows into that access to Lemon Street. And then I just finally have an aesthetics question. We'll be looking at the back of this building, and so I haven't seen necessarily any drawings of what the back of the building looks like, and so we'd be interested in knowing a little bit more about that. So does that cover concerns?
Thank you very much. Yes, yes, I was just going to say, does the development team want to address the questions that she just posed?
From a stormwater standpoint, I certainly understand.
It's okay.
I neglected to expand even further, which I will for you. We're introducing a trench drain across here. It's really difficult to see at this scale, but it's essentially just within our property, but on our side of the gate of the shared property line there. That trench drain will intercept the water. We we certainly understand and realize there's a pretty good slope coming down the driveway and understand that. And we've taken all of that into consideration with the way the stormwater flows and the trench drains, capacities to collect that stormwater. That pipes into the side of this junction box as well and joins the surface flow from your site onto us, collected, piped underground, piped into this system and continues around to be mitigated and and transported through that, through that area as well. So they have looked at all of the watershed areas of the way your, the parking lot drains and does funnel down into that space. So we certainly appreciate the question and and understand that we are looking at that as off-site mitigation that comes down onto the site and and are accommodating for that as well.
Regarding a couple of the other questions, I'll take a stab at them. So this, this body really is only reviewing the site plan, bird's eye view, two dimensional, basically. We do not get into the building design at all. The design of the building is really driven by two things. One is the building code that they have to construct to, which requires a certain number of openings and things like that. And then the other is our historical commission. They regulate the building design based on the Secretary of Interior Standards as well as other design standards and the ordinance. And generally, it requires a building follow certain rhythms and patterns of the architecture in the area, but may not need to adhere to traditional material styles. In fact, generally, they encourage newer material styles. In fact, generally they encourage newer material styles. So this project was reviewed conceptually by the historical commission, I think a couple of months ago. It's planning to come back. It has to come back for a final review. And that would certainly be a time for you to, you know, express more concerns or ideas around the aesthetics of the building and how those should change. The massing of the building, they are developing by right. There's no additional permissions that they need for height. In fact, they would have the legal right to go higher and the city would not be able to do anything about that. We have existing zoning laws that allow certain heights and with this being in one of the central business districts, they are permitted to build higher than they are right now. So certainly height is a controversial issue and should be debated at a policy level for sure, but in terms of the height of this building, that is legally guaranteed. Yeah.
I just wanted to respond to, a little more to that issue. And I, we know it's a big building. We're trying, we're trying to figure out how to modulate the materials and the scale of it to make it fit in as best as they can. It is allowed to be by zoning as much as 150 feet. We're roughly half that height. So the other thing that I think is important for you to understand is this building relative to say the Keppel Building is probably only about 10 feet higher than the Keppel Building. This building is actually no higher than the Lancaster Press Building and the Lancaster Press Building is a larger footprint. And so, you know, just for comparison, there are two other buildings that are within a half a block of where we are. So just, just to kind of think about in context, those issues. And I would say the issues of materiality and discussions of how we're dealing with the elevations and so forth, that will come up before the historic commission again. We did present in April. There were a number of comments, some of which Douglas mentioned. There were issues regarding stepping down the scale, dealing with the, how we're treating the parking garage entrance and that elevation and how that addresses the streetscape. There were some discussions about the storefront. All of those things are things that we're looking at now as we, as the, as the plans evolve. So, and I would also say, if you have specific comments that you want to get in front of us, I would prefer to get them before getting to historic commission. So it'd be nice if you have comments and you want to share them or you want to be heard on your issues, feel free to reach out.
Part of what Gary, sorry, Mr. Weaver said is, is very important too. I mean, we as a community have to work together and work with the developers in order to, you know, make sure that our voices are heard in their process as well, as well as their voices are heard and their reasonings are shared. So we would encourage you to continue to follow the process. Look at the various meeting minutes. Everything's posted online, all the information that you need. And you can, you know, follow the storyline as that way, that way as well. That way you will have a chance to participate and have your voices heard in some of the various approval processes along the way.
And Madam Chair, just to that point, and sir, feel free to make your way up to the podium if you'd like to speak. And while you're getting there, I'll just ask, do you all know where to find our agendas and minutes online? Yeah, okay. And for those who may not know, maybe you can share amongst yourselves. This particular agenda is public, was published in LNP in the government calendar. That is not a requirement that every board and commission publish there. So I just wanted to let you know not to rely on that as a resource always to find agendas. We have a website. We have a service called Ecode that we contract with. And Ecode posts, those are legal repository of all of our agendas and minutes, basically. Agendas are typically posted five days in advance of the meeting, sometimes longer. But if you definitely look within, you know, you can look at our schedules on the city website, see how often we meet. The historical commission meets once a month on third Mondays. We meet twice a month if we have agenda items. But just want to make sure you have the resources to find out more about the upcoming meetings. Please, sir.
Yes, thank you. My name's Dave Cassidy. I live in the Northgate community also. These are just a couple of observations that I would hope the commission would consider. If I understand the building plans correctly, the building is going to be developed and notched out so that we'll have this egress to Lemon Street from our parking lot. Is that correct? That it would go, they're going to start developing on the second floor. It'll cover that so that the fire truck can get through. My question would be, if the fire trucks are on Queen Street or on Lemon Street, how do they get to the back of the developed building if they, if that back section is covered? The truck would have to pull the whole way out into our lot and then try to have enough water force to get to the building. I think that's something that should really be looked at. It's great that they, that the developers feel that the fires would be handled by Queen and Lemon, but if it's in the back of the building, there's going to be a problem. That was one observation. Another observation would be that, and I'm not sure of this, I would ask the commission to check this, but I believe a former business in that parking lot had storage tanks. I don't know if they were toxic gasoline tanks. I'm not sure what they were. I don't know if they were removed, whether that, there's some kind of construction concerns that you should be aware of in terms of underground issues. I don't know if they were removed and that was filled in. I don't know that, but I would think that would be something that you would be concerned about. In the issue of the 18 parking spaces, which has been addressed a few times, it's appreciated that the developing company wants to be in touch with the parking authority, but the Lancaster Press Building was originally supposed to be attached to the one parking garage. There were issues that prevented that. Those buildings, part of the reason that they haven't all sold, now maybe they are by this time, but that's been 10 years, was because the people had to park their cars away from their actual living area. Now you're talking about at least 50 possible cars, if there's 70, a car for every spot, would need to be parked in these other garages. I don't think that's going to be a strong selling point or a strong rental point. In addition to that, I would suspect that some of these renters will be parking in, on Lemon Street particularly, in areas where permanent residents live. How does that, you know, impact on the community relationship? So I think those are all issues that the commission should be looking at. I'm hoping that, that a reasonable approach can be, what, met through these. But I am very concerned about the back of the building being on fire and no way for the fire department to be able to try to prevent further damage. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I, like, just, I guess, ask some questions, sort of?
May I say no? I'm just kidding, Mr. Cassidy.
Don't hurt my feelings.
Absolutely, you may, may, I believe you may ask another question unless it's out of line.
Well, it's actually more for residents. I'm trying, I'm just trying to, like, come to an understanding or like gather some insight So this is me personally. We're going to disagree on something. I am a fan of taller construction. More people are moving to cities than ever before, especially as climate changes all throughout the planet. Cities are growing more than any other place. And so it's not, frankly, I don't feel it's sustainable that cities keep building short. I definitely understand a concern about a large building being placed beside you, but would you mind like giving me some insight as to like, is there, are there more specific reasons as to why height is a concern for you guys?
Sorry, Ms., do you mind approaching the podium? Only because we're live streaming the meeting and there may be people watching and a...
I live on Lemon Street and I, I'm in one of the townhouses. I have a beautiful back patio that's landscaped. We have hedges in the back. I can only imagine the impact of changing the environment for all of our landscaping. That's what drew me to Northgate is the outside space in the city. So we will disagree on that because I think it's amazing to be able to live in a city with a beautifully, you can kind of see it back there, with the beautifully landscaped private outdoor space that will now be a shadow when we're used to bright light. The Christian Street building where these guys all live, they enjoy views of fireworks from Clipper and they're not going to be able to see that anymore. Oh, yeah, yeah, tons of beautiful views and it's going to be the back of the building now.
Okay. Can we get your name for the...
Sure, it's Mary Ann Gault.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, so maybe this is a question for the developer. I don't know if any compromise can be made, but is it possible that residents surrounding the building could access that green roof so that maybe different views could be experienced?
You know, I've never been asked that question before. So I've, I've developed a bunch of, a bunch of buildings in urban settings and I've never been asked that. I could look into it. I don't really have an answer. I don't know what that would look like from a insurance standpoint, but I could, I could look into it.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that you guys are here. Like, public engagement is probably one of my biggest, like MOs personally. It could be argued that we live stream because I've been such a pest about that in the past. And so to have six of you guys here, when, what city gate? Is it six condos? More than that?
Only 13, 10.
10, 12. Even still, that's a small amount compared to, like, a lot of you are here in my mind. So I appreciate you coming out to speak how you feel about the project and I do hope that some compromises may be made to, maybe there are some aspects that can be encouraged that you guys would look forward to. So thank you for being here.
Douglas, just to go back to one of the concerns, and I'm assuming this is true, but I just want to double check. The 18 parking spaces, that meets all the current zoning requirements and what are the minimum currently for, for the building? In the central business district, the minimum parking requirement is zero. That's what I thought, I just wanted to double check. And that has actually been a longstanding policy of the cities for quite some time, decades, I believe, at least two decades. And the original thinking of eliminating parking in the downtown was to, several fold actually. One was to encourage development. At one point Lancaster City was not being developed nearly to what it is now. Now we have development. Now people are concerned about the development rather than concerned about the lack of development. So it's just a challenging thing to balance. The second thing is from walkability standpoint and a highest and best use standpoint, you know, best planning policy, say urban planners and other economic developers is to maximize your buildable square footage in the downtown, which is your highest prized area. It's also where we have walkable commercial retail. So we really try to minimize parking, especially surface parking. The other thing that the city did around the same time as they established a parking authority, so instead of requiring a developer to provide its parking onsite piecemeal, project by project, we purchased land in the downtown and built parking garages. And that is essentially a public good that we provide to the community, to developers, to the downtown visitors in a more efficient way than it would be provided if each developer provided their own parking piece by piece. So while we complain about the parking, and many people complain about the parking garages, it is important to remember that now they are probably more used than they ever have been before. Much of the density in the downtown has been locating adjacent to parking structures, which we see as, as a, as sort of a perfect match in many ways. So I certainly understand the parking, the reality of parking pressures in the city and we are going through a comprehensive planning process right now in the city. If you're not familiar with what that is, I encourage you to look up EngageLancaster.com. Is anyone familiar with that outreach platform? Okay. So we have a survey on there right now that asks specifically about building typologies, height types of buildings, uses in buildings. We are using this data that we're getting from the public to create our comprehensive plan, which will be the foundation for future land use planning in the city. So that will determine what our next zoning rewrite looks like, how much height we allow, how much parking we may be requiring. So I highly encourage you to inform yourself about that. Be engaged on Engage Lancaster. If you have questions, you can contact me directly. There are ways that you can also get involved beyond that. We are, we are exploring this issue carefully now and we hope to adopt that plan sometime in early summer of next year.
Douglas, to that end, I have a comment.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say this is the most robust discussion we've had on a sketch plan, I think. Maybe next to the hospital redevelopment, rezoning, but yeah.
Thank you. I just wondered, considering that Douglas, what you're saying about the, the whole restructuring and the contributions from the community of how we want our city to look, I wondered if developers even consider that? And I don't know to what extent there was already public opinion about the height of this building with it just being a sketch plan. Were public comments already considered?
I think I can speak to that by saying the discussion of height and scale and mass was discussed at the historical commission as well, which is probably the logical place to have that discussion. I'm sure it'll be discussed again.
Okay.
Please.
You mentioned heights of building and Philadelphia. I love Philadelphia. I'm from Philadelphia, but I think most of us have moved here to Lancaster because it is a smaller city and we're not really trying to shoot for the big city look. We love the quaint city that we have now.
Are there any further comments from the public? All right. Well then, I'd like to thank the team at 347 North Queen Street for coming in and giving us a presentation this morning or this afternoon, whatever, this evening? What time of day is it this evening? Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, item number four, the redevelopment authority of the city of Lancaster. We're going to first start with the certification of blight for 538 Southeast Avenue.
Yes, Madam Chair. So this property has been vacant for quite some time. This is a property that was fire damaged in 2018 and was condemned by the city. Sorry, I'll just, I'll give everyone a moment to exit the room and for conversations, we'll have to continue our meeting.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone. So this was a fire damaged property. I do have some pictures here. If you're interested in seeing, I can maybe pass this folder down the lane here. So... this property, um, finally, uh, to this point of certify, certification of blight. Uh, it's had several owners, no one has done anything, and most recently, since February, we've heard nothing from the current owner in terms of rehabbing the property, um, despite calls and certified letters, which are documented in, in the packet that I have here.
Hate to stop you, but what's taking so long? These are almost four years old, these pictures.
Yes, they are. And, um, since then, unfortunately, no building permits have been pulled, um, is what I've, I've read in, in this packet here. Um, so, uh, it couldn't have gotten any better. Um, and unfortunately, without proper building permits and a certificate of occupancy, it still remains a condemned, um, and, yeah, condemned structure.
So, could I just move to certify this for blight?
Certainly, that is your, uh, right.
I second that.
Uh, take a vote? Uh, I'll start down here at the end. Uh, Mr. Drasta? I'm sorry, let me back up for one second here.
Should we wait and do both of them at the same time?
Well, we can, let me, if you'd like to do that, I can discuss the next property as well.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Okay. So, most of you probably know this next building. Um, this is, uh, at the corner of North Mary and, uh, sorry, um, Walnut Street. And this has been vacant for more than a decade, I believe. Um, there was a developer that for many years tried to do something with this building. Uh, the, the person who owns it or is involved in the limited partnership, um, is a, uh, wanted criminal, has a very large outstanding bill with the city of over a hundred thousand dollars, maybe over two hundred thousand dollars by court mandate. Um, there is a warrant out for his arrest and, uh, unfortunately, has not been moving this property forward. Um, we've had repeated inspections of the property and, um, it has failed to, uh, it has become blighted, um, by our assessment, by the city's assessment. So, um, we, no building permit has been, uh, pulled recently. The, the only building permit that, uh, looks like has been pulled in recent, um, years was a slate roof repair, um, but the, uh, building is vacant, it has interior demolition, um, it's not habitable, um, there also, there's been a broken window, most of the windows are now, um, covered up, uh, and it has been there for a very long time like this. So, this is the GR Richards, or GE, GR Richards Building. Um, so, we're recommending this one for certification of blight too. Um, if, and just to keep you, uh, kind of remind you about where this goes from here, these properties move to the redevelopment authority, uh, for consideration of eminent domain. Um, again, formal notice has to be given to the property owner to let them know where things stand. I think a second notice is sent and then the redevelopment authority could decide to act on the property. They have to pay fair, uh, market value to the landowner at that point and then the redevelopment authority would be responsible for disposing of the property. Um, they have affordability, uh, restrictions on all of the properties that go through, um, the authority, so this would likely, um, go to one of our mi- many community partners for affordable housing, probably, if it made it to that, uh, phase, but it would be up to the redevelopment authority to make that, uh, decision.
And Douglas, at this point, we're not recommending the use, once it goes through that, we're just recommending the blight.
That's correct, Mr. Wayland. Yeah, it would be returned to us for a recommendation of reuse.
Do I have a motion to certify, uh, five thirty-eight Southeast Avenue as a bladed property as well as five oh-two and through five oh-six West Walnut Street as a certified, uh, propus- uh, bladed property?
I would like to make the motion to certify both for blight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Mr. Wayland?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Baum?
Aye.
Mr. Drasta?
Uh, aye.
Okay, motion carries. Both, uh, five thirty-eight Southeast Avenue and five oh-two dash five oh-six West Walnut Street, um, are, uh, recommended to be certified as bladed properties. Any discussion?
Uh, the only question I have is, do we know when, cause the, the Walnut Street property has been on my mind for a long time and I'm glad to hear that it's possibly going to be affordable housing, um, do we know when it will show up at the redevelopment authority?
Sorry, Mike? Who, who would show up?
Uh, no, um, like, do we know when the-
Oh, when these pro- properties would go to redevelopment authority?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know exactly, I would have to double-check. The next scheduled meeting is the third week of September, so it'd be the day before a planning commission meeting. Um, that's the next, uh, scheduled meeting, day before our second planning commission meeting of the month. Um, I don't know whether we have to send out the notices and make sure that they're delivered and advertised before they actually hear the properties or not. Um, I'm sure that an update will be provided at that next meeting to let them know that these properties are headed that way, but, um, sorry, I don't know the date of discussion for that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, moving along in the agenda, is there anything, um, from the housing subcommittee?
Um, well, I think I'm becoming the housing subcommittee. Um, is anyone on the housing subcommittee here? I believe that it was Jocelyn and, okay, and Ms. Cook. And I think, um, was there another, a third member that was, or was it just the two of you?
Ms. Cook is now the chair of that committee.
Okay.
And since I'm, I'm in charge here, I can deem you that, right?
Um, well, I'll just say, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, have a discussion, uh, Ms. Cook, on, uh, on the side to just hear more about what maybe I can do to help assist with the committee. Um, my first step, well, uh, I already have distributed those, uh, housing studies to you and, uh, I will be shortly sending an email to our consultant asking them to attend a meeting to present that information to you as well. So, maybe we can take that as a next step, buys us a little time to regroup.
That's great, that's what I had written down as next steps.
Sure.
Perfect. Okay, moving along then, how about, um, item number six, our comprehensive plan update?
Um, so, uh, the other thing I'm going to ask is that our consultant come and present just an update on where we're at in the comprehensive planning process, uh, for you all. Uh, I know it's a, a slow-moving beast and it's kinda hard to keep your eye on it, uh, when, when so much is going on. Um, really, what this is supposed to be during this time is our land use exercise for the downtown quadrant. Um, our meeting has gone much longer than I anticipated us going and, uh, I don't wanna ask more of the commission than you can give, so, uh, I'll offer it back to you as to whether you wanna complete this exercise tonight or whether we should defer to another meeting when we have more energy.
So, I would, I would recommend that we defer to another meeting when we have more brain power and energy left over.
Okay.
Do we have time to delay?
I concur.
Time to-
Yeah, as far as the comprehensive plan, this isn't gonna set us back or anything.
Um, I don't think so. Um, we are not close to having a draft land use map yet, so I don't think that this is of pressing importance tonight, although I do think we should do it at the next meeting. And the next meeting, um, may actually be quite busy as well.
September seventh.
Yeah, September seventh, we're anticipating, uh, HDC two thirteen College Ave, um, which will likely, uh, be a well-attended meeting. And we're also anticipating, um-
More of a property meeting?
Oh, two more certifications of blight. And is, uh, Redmond's ready or, probably not. But we also have, um, two, two micro cottages on Sunnyside that are being proposed for land development and there's a decision to be made there on that application. Yeah, for modifications. Um, any, anything else that you can think of? Okay.
You, you mentioned most.
Okay, I thi- I think that's most of the upcoming agenda and maybe I should get into the habit of letting you know what's coming up at the next meeting, just so you can keep tabs on that.
That would be great.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh-oh. Um, so, yeah, we can certainly defer that exercise, just keeping in mind that, uh, a lot of our meetings are very busy ahead of us, but that's okay, that's all right. Um, the other alternative is, uh, we could do this as a homework exercise and if you wanted to submit your notes to me, uh, over email, you're certainly welcome to do that too. I know we all benefit from the group discussion, but that's just another way we could do this.
Mr. Smith, are we able to do this, um, as a group outside? If, if we would, uh, off the meeting, it's not on the meeting, um, so are we able to come together as a group? Like, I remember-
We did a similar talk, right?
Yeah.
Where we ended the meeting and then continued to carry on through that discussion.
So, we technically didn't end the meeting, uh, we continued the meeting and, and I, I would have to ask our lawyer for an opinion on this because m- my, um, conservative interpretation is that this is related to the business of the planning commission, since you'll be adopting the, uh, the, the, yeah, the comprehensive plan, sorry, I'm getting tongue-tied because it's getting, I've been working for too long.
So, we'd have to have an official meeting and notify the public and et cetera if we wanted to meet?
Exactly. Yeah, and we could schedule a special meeting and we would have to advertise that meeting accordingly. That is something we can do and we could set a particular night and then do, take care of other business at that time. And I, I just, we already meet twice a month, I sorta hate to ask a third meeting of us all in, in a month. We, we certainly can, uh, any thoughts on whether you'd prefer that we do this on September seventh or homework assignment or by special meeting?
So, my only thought with this one is, with the downtown quadrant, I, I think there's gonna be a lot of passion and a lot of excitement and I think it's gonna drive a really, um, robust discussion. Uh, so, that, that's my only concern. If we, you know, I wanna allow the time and the thought to, um, percolate amongst all of us as a group, um, but also be mindful of everybody's time, so, I, I'll defer to see what others think as far as an, an additional meeting, maybe just to cover that, um, or if we wanna just, you know, plan for next mon- or next, uh, in two weeks from now that we know we're just gonna move in for a couple hours.
Um, so, I think that the downtown quadrant should definitely be at one of our regular meetings, I fe- cause like, I agree with you that it's gonna be the most impassioned of the sections we do, but, uh, I know we've been kinda on the fence about whether to do the annexes or not. I personally wouldn't mind, like, a subcommittee or a, a special meeting to handle the annexes in one swoop, um, or a couple swoops, uh, cause I do think that our input is super valuable for these.
One of the things I would love to see and if we can, or at least help me, keep a little bit of a laser focus on what the purview of the planning commission is when we're entertaining questions because my concern is, we do eat up a lot of time with things that, um, aren't our questions to be asking or answering. And, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure how to because I'm very guilty of it myself. I will ask a question that is definitely historic commission or definitely traffic commission or something along that line and ultimately, everything does still come through us before it hits the city council or before it hits the final stages. So, we are key, we can't just write off responsibilities as, oh, that's a historic commission, we don't wanna hear you. But that is hard because as soon as we listen to some of the things or we then weigh in, it's like, yeah, that is a little tall, isn't it? Well, that isn't us to say it and I get concerned about, not legalities of it, but just where we're at by answering or even weighing in on things that we shouldn't. So, I would love some help on that, just kind of thinking about the time that we use today and in general.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Wayland, I re- I really appreciate the comment. I, I'm always empathetic to concerns that are voiced here regardless of whether they're in our purview or not. Um, however, you know, we, we, it, it is incumbent upon us to remain credible by adhering to our legal charge and implementing that duty. And, um, I know I can, I feel like I can be a bit of a nag sometimes around that, um, but I, I really am trying to protect that credibility and your legal, uh, your vulnerability. I mean, if we make decisions here that are outside the bounds of our charge, that is, you know, planning commission is, is, um, vulnerable, legally vulnerable in that situation. Um, there are definitely policy issues that we can set time aside for and we can make recommendations for zoning amendments, land development, and certainly the comp plan is a big one. You guys are going to have a, an extremely, like, important duty in recommending a comp plan and reviewing that, so we'll get some presentations lined up. Um, these next, uh, nine, eight, nine months are very important for the planning commission, so I, I really wanna start, um, i- building you more into that process. Um, recommending a future land use map will set the course of our zoning, height, all kinds of different things, uh, in a broad sense, but still a very important one, um, cause ultimately, our zoning code has to adhere to our comp plan. So, there's, there's a legal requirement that those two documents work in concert together. Uh, so, yeah, I think it's, um, dur- it's hearing, hearing those, uh, comments, my suggestion would be, you know, reminding ourselves and them of our legal purview and then, for us, our duty is to keep those comments in mind and set aside time for policy discussion, um, which, well, it's hard to make time, isn't it? When, when we're all so busy at these meetings.
I, I mean, I, I, I do believe that we should consider some type of policy discussion regarding building height and parking, and what this is different and how that continues to- How that continues to, um, grow and evolve as our community continues to grow and evolve along with it. Um, so, I, I, that would be a, a discussion I would be interested in having, however, I do think it's a little bit premature as, as I think some of that will naturally, um, roll itself out as we get further in along with this, uh, comprehensive plan.
Yeah. So. Thank you and sincerely appreciate all of your interest in these matters of development. It's, uh, it is a pleasure to work with a planning commission that is engaged on those topics, so, thank you.
So, did we decide what we're gonna do regarding the land use exercise? Are we gonna jump in or are we gonna table that for the next meeting or do we wanna have a second meeting?
Well, I would like to ask Douglas if we, if there is any other, i- if there are any, any documents that we can take into consideration as kind of homework for planning in the next meeting to review this or-
Yeah, in particular regarding the downtown, uh, yes. Um, let me give some thought to that. Certainly, the, the housing issue, but let me, let me give some thought to that and I'll get back to you. Um, I'll send you something.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so with that being said, we're gonna table the land use exercise for, uh, a future meeting and we're gonna move on to other business, um, the election of the new chairperson for the planning commission. Um, do we wanna have that discussion tonight or do we wanna table that until we have a couple more of our planning commission members here to support and-
I would like to make a motion to table that for the next meeting when we have at least our vice chair here, to be part of that.
Okay. All right, uh, with, there is no, um, public here to, um, add in the participation, so with that being said, I will call the meeting, um, to a close at eight oh-five, uh, PM.